Six thirty, I call the order. Good evening, call to order the. January eleventh meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission, please join me or take a little call, please.
Chair Hartsfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Don DeZellum.
President.
George Jones.
Here.
Ken Kennedy. And my understanding from talking to or getting a message from him earlier is.
Yes, I'm here.
Right, that he may be joining us in person at some point.
I'm on my way from the airport, I just got there a little late tonight, so. I'll be arriving in about twenty or thirty minutes.
Take your time, drive safe, sir. Larry Larson.
Here.
Don Hoyne.
Here.
And Cole Middleton.
Here.
Please join me with Bunch of Legions. Well, this is the first meeting of the Planning Commission this year. And so we have the election of officers for Chair and Vice Chair's position. Uh, any nominations?
I have. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate yourself, the Chairman, and Lee as Vice Chairman. Continue on the great work that you've been doing, have a good job, and we appreciate the work and. You deserve that position.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations? Need a second? Read a second?
Second, sure.
Okay, any other nominations? All saying none, I guess we'll have to take a vote and see.
Okay, um. George Jones.
Yes.
Ken Kennedy.
Yes.
Larry Larson.
Yes.
Don Hoyne.
Yes.
Cole Middleton.
Yes.
Don DeZellum.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Brown or. Lee Brown.
Yes.
And Ken Hartsfield.
Uh, yes. Uh, thank you, appreciate your support. Takes us to the approval of minutes. For December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Any comments or corrections?
Yes, on number three on the approval of the minutes. Uh, my last name is spelled wrong.
My apologies, sir.
No problem, you got it right everywhere else.
Any other corrections or comments? All in favor of approving the minutes? To decide by saying aye.
Aye.
When you oppose?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, it takes us to public hearings, we have one public hearing tonight. The process will be. Uh, staff will give a presentation of the issues, we'll go through that, ask any questions. Commissioner will ask questions and clarifications if necessary at that point. We'll then give the applicant opportunity to make presentation or comment. Uh, again, we'll then ask some questions and move forward to public hearings. We will invite the people, the audience, people on Zoom to make their comments. Uh, and then we'll, we'll close the public hearing. Give the applicant opportunity to rebuttal any questions, respond to those issues that might have been raised in the public comment. Uh, then we'll have debate among the commissioners. Uh, they ask the applicant for clarification, and then we'll take the vote to see how to move forward. That being said, Karen, you have some introductions.
I do, I have, and I just a quick reminder to everyone that the person who does the minutes for us is not attending this evening. So she does this from recordings and such, so please, when you are speaking, the little green light on your microphone needs to be on. And then you do need to be close to the mic and, and speak clearly, and it's, it's like uncomfortably close to the microphone, you'll get used to it. But that's very helpful for the person doing the minutes, thank you. And then this evening I have here what joining us, Andrew Baker with Baseline and Engineering. Um, he's a planner there and we've brought him on board to help us, um, since we've had quite the influx of some pretty substantial projects. Um, so he comes to us with quite a bit of experience and I'll turn things over to him and you can fill in whatever else you need to there.
Thanks, Karen. Good evening, Commissioners, uh, very happy to be here, everyone in the audience and on Zoom, thanks for joining us tonight. Um, as she mentioned, I'm a senior planner with baseline engineering. We have offices along the front range and we've been doing development review for the city, uh, for a couple of years now. As Karen mentioned, uh, a few of these kind of higher level projects have come in. Um, so you'll probably be seeing a lot more of my face over the next few months and I'm very much looking forward to it. Tonight. Let me share my screen here. I will be presenting the Woodland Station filing number two preliminary plat. Uh, this application has been proposed by the Taba House Properties LLC, who I believe has joined us in the audience today. Um, this is a planning commission hearing. By which. The municipal code, um, states that planning commission shall hold a hearing on the preliminary plat at this meeting. Uh, the commission may approve, deny, or approve with conditions. Uh, if, i- it is in the opinion of the planning commission that the applicant hasn't provided enough information. Uh, the commission can choose to table that plat discussion until the next regular meeting. Um, after tonight, we will get your approval, denial, and feedback, um, and then we'll be going to city council. Uh, for the final decision on this preliminary plat next month. The property that we are looking at tonight is in downtown, uh, south of US twenty-four. The site is currently vacant, uh, directly south of Bergstrom Park, as well as, um, the Woodland Hardware Store. Uh, we have access right now from South Center Street and Saddle Club Road. On the north side of the property is Bergstrom Alley, um, though right now that is mostly unapproved. Um, to the east, we have. A few residential neighborhoods, um, as well as to the south, the U Chief Mobile Home Park. And then to the west are a few businesses, including the Vector Bank. And two vacant properties, one of which, which is owned by the Beer Garden Lane Department, Beer Garden Lane Development LLC. Um, and a city property as well. The Downtown Development Authority adopted a foundation plan for this site on February twenty-first of two thousand two. Uh, five years later, in two thousand seven, the Woodland Station Overlay District was established. Uh, this district was intended to, uh, make sure that downtown development in this area was done in an orderly fashion. Um, maintaining the mountain historic environment as, as well as being in harmony with the rest of the development in the area. And the comprehensive plan designates this property as a downtown mixed use. Um, the comprehensive plan, just to reiterate, uh, gives planned policies, objectives, and action items for land use and growth. Um, housing as well as character and design, uh, economic development, sustainability, um, parks, trails, and open space. The downtown mixed-use area is intended to promote the identity and cohesion that is currently in the downtown. Um, and what is desired for future development and redevelopment. Uh, this is intended to be, as you can tell in the name, uh, mixed-use area, both commercial and residential. Uh, it would incorporate local art and history, um, entertainment and events. Uh, a public gathering space as well as pedestrianism, um, all of those items that you typically associate with an active and engaged downtown. The property is Zoned CBD, uh, as part of the Central Business District, also in line. Um, in general with what you expect out of downtown development. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, it is within the Woodland Station Overlay District. Um, that district has some, uh, you know, kind of jagged boundaries, so I've outlined that up there for you. Um, it mostly encompasses this cross project, uh, with a few of the adjacent properties as well. Um, but once again, that zone district of the CBD, uh, intended to be a downtown area associated with commercial activity. Uh, lots of pedestrian activity as well as high density. Um, because of the adjacency to US twenty-four, off-street parking. Pedestrian mobility, um, and access are important here, uh, residential activity is appropriate. Um, on second or third floor as part of a vertical mixed-use, um, but also we see offices, shops, retails, and restaurants. Uh, the Woodland Station over, the, the Woodland Station Overlay District, um, as I had mentioned, i- is really meant to guide the architectural and site. Planning components of projects in this area. Um, it requires a certain level of cohesion, harmony, and aesthetic, uh, to be. Proposed within these projects, um, however, allows a little bit of flexibility as far as, um, some of the nuts and bolts with setbacks and other requirements. That we can kind of deviate from that normal zone district. Um, that being said, the uses that are allowed within there do match what, uh, is found in the CBD Zone District. Um, it's meant to be more of a form-based flexibility. This preliminary plat is subdividing the property into one lot, uh, one developable lot or initially developable lot, I should say. Of point three-five acres and that's going to be on the north side, um, along Bergstrom Alley. Uh, we also have two tracks, one of which is almost one acre and another that is, uh, about four and three-quarters. Um, which are intended for future development, um, as well as utility infrastructure. Uh, the plans for those are forthcoming, um, we do have a plan of development and a general phasing plan, but at this time. Uh, the focus of these applications is, uh, only on Lot One. There is also right-of-way that is, uh, proposed to be dedicated as an extension to Saddle Club Avenue, moving west. Um, and then turning north into a future road that would connect with Bergstrom Alley, uh, leading back to Center Street. The future road on the west side that I mentioned, um. That is shown it with a forty-nine-foot right-of-way, um, the same as Saddle Club Avenue, however, to establish that. Um, there is fifteen feet that is shown off-site, um, that is on the adjacent Beer Garden Development Lane property. Um, it, though it is not shown here, um, theoretically, that would be extended down into the city-owned property as well. Um, but we can talk about more about that later, and we have some utility and public improvements easements on both Lot One and Track A. This is the site plan, uh, associated with the preliminary plat, give you a little more contextual information. Uh, you can see on the south side, Track B, uh, the Fountain Creek Drainage Channel runs from the city-owned parcel to the west. Um, through Track B, uh, from northwest to southeast into a FEMA-mapped flood. Plane, I believe it's flood plane, not floodway, uh, yes, FEMA-designated flood plane that's in the southeast corner of, of that property. Um, there is existing infrastructure that is in that corner and, and along that east side as well. A closer look at that site plan, um, associated with the preliminary plat. As you can see, Lot One on the top right corner is where the Taba House Development Site will be located. Um, along the north side of that, as well as along, uh, the future road on the western border and Saddle Club Avenue. Um, there, there is proposed on-street parking. Um, there are also improvements being made to Bergstrom Alley. Um, the access to the Bergstrom Park Parking Lot, uh, is intended to be closed along South Center Avenue and relocated. Um, along Bergstrom Alley, um, as you can see, I, there we go, right there. Um, I mentioned the right-of-way along the western property, uh, that is shared with the Beer Garden Lane Development. Um, that road is stubbed out to the south and would continue south once the future development of this site, site occurs. Um, there are also proposed utility easements along Track A. Um, again, for the, the known infrastructure improvements that would be associated with this project. This preliminary plat was referred to, um, all of the internal reviewers that we normally see. Uh, including city attorney, city manager, city clerk, uh, the utilities, public works, police departments, um, and then planning and building, of course. Uh, we also referred that to the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District. Uh, Dry Utility Companies, Black Hills Energy, Core Electric, uh, Century Link Lumen and TDS Telecom, and of course, CDOT. Um, the second submittal of this was made on December eighth. Um, I believe in your packet, you would have seen red lines and comments that came from our first review. Um, there are still comments that are forthcoming from that second review, um, both from the city. As well as some of the external reviewers, um, especially CDOT. And so we are still working through, um, some of those comments that, as I mentioned, you are seeing in your packet. Staff has found that the preliminary plat does conditionally comply, um, with the applicable municipal code sections. Um, I've listed those there, all, um, spare us all from reading through the numbers. Uh, though I would be happy to talk about any of these sections in detail if anybody asks. Um, but essentially for the preliminary plat, we're looking at the design and drawing, um, meeting certain formatting standards. Um, some of those red lines that you would have seen and what we're still working through are, um, just that. Uh, the preparation process and then, uh, some supplemental information that is submitted along with that. Um, such as traffic studies and utility studies and the other documents that you saw. Um, further review by city staff and CDOT will be necessary, uh, to address the comments that are remaining. Um, as I mentioned, some of those are more formatting and, um. Uh, kind of housekeeping-based, some of those are more substantial, um, and I think that, uh, especially comments from CDOT. Um, some of the requirements that they've made as far as improvements that will be required on US twenty-four. Um, do still need to be worked out with between CDOT and the applicant, um, and the traffic study that they have submitted. So staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval to city council based on the following eight conditions. Uh, the first of which being that prior to any construction on the subject property, the applicant must enter into a subdivision development agreement. Um, that would be for the public improvements that are being installed as part of the subdivision. Um, condition number two, development of Lot One is subject to approval of all applicable zoning development permits. Um, through City of Woodland Park Planning Department as well as the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. The applicant must also resolve the dedication of right-of-way shown on the western edge of the property. Um, either via, via a separate instrument prior to final plat recordation, um, that would be the Woodland Station filing two final plat. Um, or by including the subject properties and associated property owners in the forthcoming final plat application. Uh, condition number four, the applicant must address the loss of public parkland in Bergstrom Park. Uh, as well as future public and open space that is, uh, that will be shown in the final plat to the city. Um, as I had mentioned, the, the changing of the access in Bergland Park, um, developing the alley, improving the alleyway. And then the new turn lane on US twenty-four, um, do constrict Bergstrom Park just a little bit on all sides. Um, as part of the applicant's plan of development, uh, there are future phases where public plaza. And, um, you know, the kind of re-establishing that public space is, uh, is proposed. Um, but again, the, that wasn't necessarily shown in this plat, um, and so we have listed as a condition here. Uh, another item that we didn't discuss in Bergstrom Park is the historical cog car. Um, that is currently located on Lot One of the proposed plat, um, it might be kind of sitting on the line of Lot One and Bergstrom Alley. Um, we're not sure what the plans are for the potential relocation of that historical asset. Um, if it is to stay on-site, then necessary easements will need to be put in place and shown on this plat. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm moving around my Zoom screen so that I can read here. Condition number six, the applicant must address all comments and red lines from city staff and external review agencies. Uh, from the preliminary plat as well as the site plan review before the submittal of final plat and zoning development permits. And as part of that final plat application, um, all CDOT comments, including an escrow account for the required public improvements, must be addressed. And finally, the preliminary plat, as well as all future final plots, must be revised in order to meet the standards found in. Municipal Code Section seventeen dash forty dash one seventy for the location and size of all easements. Um, whether that be for the historic cog car, uh, future utilities, or any access that is proposed. Thank you all once again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioner, any questions?
Uh, yeah, so, um, Andrew, uh, George Jones, nice to meet you. Um, can you talk more, can you get in-depth on the CDOT, um, recommendations and what they're? What they're, uh, looking to do, the turning lane and, and so on?
Sure, um, let me. Share my screen again, I, I don't know about you all, I'm helplessly visual, um.
Yeah, no, definitely would benefit from that.
Um, so along. Along US twenty-four, um, there is an existing streetlight that is at the, uh, intersection of South Center Street.
It's a crosswalk, you mean?
Uh, crosswalk, excuse me, yeah, sorry, trying to do a few things here at once, um, here you go. So, crosswalk, this is Center Street, um, the entrance to Bergstrom Park right here and the site off to the left. Um, the CDOT, the, the first review of the traffic study, um, CDOT did require. Um, a new right-hand turn lane that would be eastbound Midland Avenue, US twenty-four, um, providing further access into the site. Uh, there, the, the right-of-way that exists there, um, should theoretically have enough space in order to do that. Uh, the applicant can probably speak more to the design that they're proposing, um, that, that, that should fit. Um, however, as you can see, the improvements, the alleyway, um. The, the sidewalk, the detached sidewalk, as well as landscaping on the other side, um, technically it is in the right-of-way, and so that would. Uh, I, I believe that the detached sidewalk would become attached, um, once again, we have not seen design drawings of that. Uh, the, the second submittal, the applicant did state that those drawings are being worked on. Um, and, and that's part of what needs to continue to be worked through with CDOT. Um, so, you know, that, at this point, from our standpoint, the, the improvements will be made in the right-of-way. Um, though unfortunately, just due to the nature of the development out there, it, it, it will. It, it will reduce the kind of pedestrianism, or at least the feeling that, that it happens as you're walking down that side of the road.
Okay, thank you. There, I had another question, uh, with regards to the Pike's Peak Regional Building Authority or what have you, um. So, and this may be my ignorance, but why are they involved in that?
So, this, I, I'm, I, I think I can answer this question well. Um, they operate a lot like Baseline does for the city and that they are reviewing all building permits for Woodland Park.
Okay, I just haven't, I haven't seen that condition before, I don't think, in some of the earlier stuff, so I'm.
But they are the building department for Woodland Park and provide inspection and plan review services for the city.
And I think that was really, you know, included more contextually that, you know, the, 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 the comment was mainly geared toward. What is expected prior to the zoning development permits and, you know, the, at, at that point is where it starts across the boundary between planning and building review.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
That's why we have this picture up, uh, so I guess the right-turn lane heading eastbound is why we're closing the existing driveway into the. Bergstrom Park Parking Lot?
Uh, right, um, I'm not an engineer, so I can, I've only, you know, know enough to be dangerous, but my assumption is, you know, th- there's. Access spacing requirements, um, with the level of activity that this, you know, big mixed-use downtown project would bring. Having an entrance to a parking lot, you know, twenty feet with, from, from the highway is generally problematic, so I think. Um, due to most likely specs and standards, um, as well as just a, a better functioning circulation system, that access is being proposed to.
And so the traffic study does anticipate the full build-out of the property and not just the Tava House?
That's I am going to have to let my applicant speak to.
Okay, can I? There's, I guess, a deceleration lane heading eastbound to turn right, is there anything for an acceleration lane for leaving? Um, Center Street and turning right?
I don't believe so.
Okay, um, I also had a question, if you could, um, bring back one of the things showing the preliminary plat layout.
Zoomed-in version, or do you want the whole site?
Um, well, actually, what I was looking at is the, the west, the, the west-side street. Um, there is the, the, um. Proposed right-of-way that's outside the property, that has to be sorted out. That only goes about two-thirds of the way down the street, so is the street intended to narrow and it's southern, the southwest? This, the southern portion of that west-side street, does it just, it looks like it, the, the area gets much narrower.
Um, right, which is, uh, one of the red-line comments that we're hoping to get addressed. Um, because though it is city-owned property, um, it is not inherent that that can be right-of-way. Um, so along with the Beer Garden Development Lane, uh, the city would need to be a party to any future subdivision.
So that, I wasn't sure how far down the city went, the city property goes down all the way to the proposed new. Saddle Club Extension on the south side, pretty much, where it continues west, it's all booking in the city property.
Yes, you can see where, where the south, the south side of Saddle Club Avenue stubs out here. This is the southern property line to the city-owned boundary, whereas this is the northern property line.
I guess you would dress it in the comments because it refers to the property owners, it doesn't say the city, but the city is one of the two.
Right, yeah. Um, but yes, no, you are completely right, the road isn't, uh, meant to shrink there. Um, that would need to be another dedication and, and another, uh, item that's shown on some type of conveyance.
In, in conjunction with that particular question, has discussions been, uh, occurring between the city? And the adjacent property owners as well as the adjacent for this project?
Uh, we did receive, uh, the applicant provided as part of the, uh, first submission, I believe, a letter from. The Beer Garden Development Property Owner, um, approving the conveyance as it has shown here. Um, and so for preliminary plating purposes, uh, we felt like that was appropriate, you know. We, we do at least have in writing that that property owner is knowledgeable, um, but before final plowed, it would, you know, we would need more than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
In conjunction with that question, have you had any additional discussion for CDOT, besides the written correspondence?
Um, I have not, no, um, but I would, I, I, I could check with our city engineer, Ben, he might have. Um, obviously, you know, the engineering-type stuff, he is, is taking a bit more of the lead on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Um, I had a question on the, uh, recommendation to address the loss of public land in Bergstrom Park. Uh, my question is really, and it may be as much a que- uh, question for the commissioner as for you is, what's the expectation? Is, what, what constitutes success in, in, uh, addressing that concern? How do we close that, or how does that get closed?
Absolutely, um, there, there's, there's many ways that that could be addressed, and with a preliminary plat. Um, i- i- you know, it, it's hard because we're, we're looking at the subdivision of land, right? Um, but I, I, I think that we feel comfortable with the applicant's approved plan of development. Um, that does show the public park being located in Phase Three of this project, uh, which I believe would be located on Track A. Um, however, it, it, the, some items such as the, the parking and the easements that are in place. Um, just don't necessarily show that here, uh, there was also a, a, a matter of landscaping that gets lost. Um, where the landscape plan is only shown on the boundaries of this property. Um, whereas there will be landscaping and trees that are lost with the movement of access on the Bergstrom Park, so I was hoping that that could get expanded. Um, and we could show some of that there, and, um, you know, a- a- again, there's. Really, uh, some of this is more meant to just kind of keep the story going, you know, and, and make sure that all of this is written down. Um, it, it's been spoken in a public hearing that that is expected, um, that, that we know that. Uh, almost just addressed, trying to get ahead of the issue that, yes, we are losing public pla- public space. Um, we are planning to get it back and, you know, just as a condition of approval to, um, ensure that that happens and that. Stays consistent with all the public hearings that we have on this site.
Um, any, any questions at this point? Um, as far as the parking, I saw that it's supposed to be eighty spaces, is that? Eighty all the way around the perimeter plus Bergstrom? Is that eighty all the way around the perimeter plus Berkstrom Park or not counting Berkstrom Park?
I don't believe that it is counting Berkstrom Park, but I do believe it counts the existing on-street parking that's on South Center Lane.
Is that, that, so the South Center Lane parking, I believe the east portion is public parking. And then the west portion, does that, that belongs to, that's private then? That would be private parking, I assume.
My assumption is that all of this parking that would be located in the public right-of-way would be considered public. But that, you know, the parking standards and are, you know, a little bit more closely related to the site plan review. And so that's one of those items that we are, we're continuing to discuss and, you know, will need to, you know, continue to be worked out. Obviously, as you can see, like the required parking here for the Tava House development is just that one lot. Obviously, with future development, we're gonna need more parking somewhere. And so, you know, it'll be up to the applicant and, you know, working with us to ensure that that happens, you know, properly. But this is how they have proposed today.
And it's just, I know, I know parking can be a real conversation at some point, but just to be clear, the Berkstrom Park parking is gonna be probably smaller, right? That lot's gonna get reduced, you think?
The size isn't reduced, but there will be spaces lost. You know, just the orientation of it where the access point is.
Okay. Do you want to ask? I, Don had a great comment, so I'm going to ask it though, because I think it's relevant. So why the condition of the cog rail, railroad piece? Why? So you're putting that on the applicant as a condition to move that?
No, we are asking the question, where does it go and what's it doing? If it's not shown on this plat, then we have to assume it's being relocated. And so to where and how and by whom? If it's meant to stay here, then we do need an easement shown on the plat, is basically that, but.
But it is noted as a condition.
Right. And, you know, once again, just to kind of keep that story consistent as we move through all the public hearings. This is not something that we want to necessarily kick down the road. And it is something that will need to be addressed on the final plat.
Just a couple I should have asked before. With the, with the revision, Berkstrom Alley, does it, does it become the same size and provide the same width with the straight-in parking as on the west side? Is this all similar? Or it's hard to read how, what's the dimensions of the?
You're right. I believe it is the same forty-nine-foot right-of-way that's being proposed on the other two. I can zoom in here and check that for you in a moment. But, yes, it's, and the applicant can address that as well. I don't know the total right-of-way number off the top of my head.
Beer Garden, I guess it indicated that it's, you know, it's acceptance of the principle of giving a right-of-way here. And you said it would have to be formalized before the final plat. Is there anything here in adding and creating this road along the west side? Does that, does that relate to access for Beer Garden Lane's property there? And because if it did, it would seem like it would affect how one would evaluate and assess these, the route, the road around around the first phase, couple phases of construction and parking in it too, if it was gonna provide access as well to the beer garden lane. But I mean, is there some plan here that's not stated? Is it also access?
Not, not that we are aware of. The, you know, the current access for the Beer Garden property is off of US twenty four. I don't know.
It's kind of a narrow one that widens down below, so I mean.
Yeah, and, you know, yeah, we do not know if there's any plans to redevelop that. What I can say is the city-owned property just to the south of that was acquired i- in order to provide through access on Saddle Club Road. And so, you know, theoretically, I can see how in general gaining access to that kind of southern part of downtown could, you know, definitely be in the plans, but.
Presumably, the improvements that are put and made when the, when the west lane is put in, you won't have curb cuts on the west side of it ready for Beer Garden Lane unless, unless that's been.
Right, unless that was, you know, unless the construction plans come in and show something else, you know, at this time, you're correct.
Other questions I will have will be after we have the presentation from the applicant in the public hearing. Some of the questions may be answered at that time.
Well, very good. I guess that's a good segue into inviting the applicant to come forward and give a presentation or make comment. Name and address, please.
Sure. Mark Weaver, three-one-two, April Sun Court here in Woodland Park. Commissioners, hello. Happy twenty twenty-four to you. Thank you for hearing our agenda item tonight and hearing this preliminary plat review. Okay, great. Thank you, Andrew. I thought you'd want to hear just a few or see a few things about our project that brought us to this point. There's some renderings that we want you to see about what's proposed that we have to build there. And it's brief, so it won't take long. Okay, next slide, please. So just so you know, Tava House Properties is the property owner and the applicant. The property owners and developers are Derek Wagner, who's here tonight, and myself. And we have some of our team here, if I could introduce them just briefly. So Ryan Lloyd is our architect. David Maharris is our civil engineer. Chris Hanson is our owner's rent. And I don't think there's anybody else. Okay. Next slide. So just a little bit of history. We just want y'all to know that we started this back in August of twenty nineteen. We were just trying to buy the future lot two, which is really the one-point-five acres that would be what we're proposing tonight and Track A. We were just trying to buy that at that time, not the six-point-six-three total acres. We decided to pass on it, but we came back in twenty twenty-two. So we boomeranged back to it. And at that time, we pursued the whole six-point-six-three acres, is what we did. We closed on it in April of last year. So you can say we've been going for four-plus years at this location, which means that we're in it for the long haul. We just want you to know that we've got our development team, including our lender for this project. We hope to start construction April, May, June of this year. We have spent hard money, one, over one-point-one million dollars to this point. What we're proposing to build for Tava House is gonna be about six million dollars with all the infrastructure and parking that we propose as well. It'll take about twelve months to construct. So hopefully, May, June, twenty twenty-five is when we'd have an opening. And it'll have, it's gonna have a casual dining component, a fine dining component, a culinary school, and a party room. Okay, so here's some renderings that you can see. This is from Center Street, looking northwest. So Pike's Peak would be off to our left here. Highway twenty-four would be off to the right. Next slide. This is from what we are calling the Plaza, a green space that spills out of Tava House to the south. And it'll be like a manicured and approved lawn that we'd have for people to gather, hang out, that sort of thing. So if we'd hold here for just a second, to the right of the building, upstairs, that's where the fine dining is gonna be. The lower floor, most of that lower floor is where the casual dining will be. And the party room is off there to the left. Next slide. This is looking from the west side of the Plaza to the northeast. And you can see that's a better view of what the party room is gonna look like. Next slide. And then this is a view from twenty-four, looking south. So this is the north side of the building. So the entrance is there to the left. Fine dining is up there on that second floor. Next slide. So I think you already, you heard Andrew told you that we've got a plan of development and a development agreement that's been executed and recorded, and we did that May of last year. All the future phasing of Track A and B will follow those uses and timelines that are described there. And I think we all know this. The six-point-six-three acres has got challenges. That's why it's been vacant for twenty years. So just letting you know, it's not an easy project to pull this off. And that's it. Any questions?
Any comments, questions, this time for the applicant?
Yes, sir, Mr. Larson.
Yes, I got a question for you, Mark. What was the project's team's thought in considerations of the Berkstrom Park restroom facility being on their front door?
How we, as to how we would incorporate it or?
Or how would you reconcile that? Your fine dining patrons will be looking out at a public restroom?
Well, there, and without showing you a floor plan, it's a little bit difficult. But that's, that's the outside deck on that top floor. Then you have those big windows that are looking to the south, to the peak. That's gonna be part of the fine dining.
Okay.
Is that what your curious men?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not just the view of the street, it's also looking at the peak.
Yep. Well, when you look south.
Yes.
Yes. When you're looking north.
You're looking at Highway twenty-four.
Highway twenty-four and the restroom.
That's right.
Okay.
Antlers arch.
I know you would have thought of it, but I wanted to hear your answer on it.
Sure, sure.
The staff report includes the red line comments for the latest submittal. And then that it included a comment from the planning department talking about the relocation of the cog railroad car.
Yes, sir.
And it said, consider looking at the courtyard as a place for a possible location. Has that been considered by the applicant?
No, sir. The courtyard would be, you're talking about the Plaza area that we have
Yes.
proposed. No, sir. So, Mr. Larson, if we could just tell you that we don't have any plans for the cog on our property. We did not buy that cog. We did not buy the the stage coats, and we did not buy the picnic tables. That was excluded from the purchase. We will, we have offered to pay to move it wherever decides to land.
Okay.
But it won't be on Woodland Station.
Thank you.
Sure.
Excuse me, sir, can I ask, have you reviewed the red line comments from the city staff?
Yes, sir.
Do you disagree with any of them?
Well, if I could give some clarification about that, D cell, if I could open that up to the D cell lane to Center Street, C dot wants us to put, put up an escrow account for that turn lane. So for someone to ask if the C dot study or the traffic study addresses all the rest of the property, it does not. It is only about this phase one. So the turn lane, yes, it will happen, but in a future phase, phase two. And we'll escrow money now, though, for that D cell line. So that's one little clarification. The property to, someone asked about the Beer Garden Lane property. And what's the, is that gonna be access and that sort of thing? And it's actually to give width to that street on the west side of the plaza. So that's a full width all the way around Phase One, Two, and Three. So that's what it's about.
Okay.
Is there anything, I'll look at my team. Is there anything else that we need to clarify? Oh, yeah, yes. The, the language, the question about Berkstrom and loss of park space. What we're losing is two parking spaces. So it's not a taking of the land and eliminating some swath. It's just two parking spaces. And the, there was another question about why you close off that access coming off of twenty-four. We, we did that. We thought that was a better design to get people in so they don't stack and to turn in and have that easier access in the Berkstrom Park. Does that make sense?
It does. So the C dot requiring a upgrade of that light to more signalized intersection or just the same crosswalk?
That's just the same, nothing about that. You're talking about right there at center?
Yes.
Those are, no change about that. The Hawk system and all that, no change.
Yes, the city, city staff, does it? How does one resolve this? Is C dot control the process involved here? Or does the city, or how does that, how does that get sorted out?
As, as far as what, the improvements?
As I understood the gentleman, you know, when I asked, what are, you know, where are the problems? And the red lens already identified where, where, what does he disagree with? As I understood him to say is escrowing C dot required, C dot required changes. And I guess if the changes were done early, it wouldn't really matter because, yes, it wouldn't be an escrow because the change would be made. But it's, it falls from your desire to postpone those, some of the C dot changes till further development is done, higher traffic's calling for it. And that means that would extend the time where work wasn't done and they would have a longer escrow. Is that? How does one sort through that problem?
I, I mean, I don't know if there is much that staff would, could, or should do. It being C dot right-of-way, I know that our city engineering staff relies on C dot to, you know, be the the jurisdiction in charge. And so I think we would rely on that review. I, I think that from just a general planning perspective, we know that for this, you know, one-point-three-acre parcel, there, there's already a turn lane that is required. I think that it's fair to assume that with, you know, further development of the other six, that there could be even further improvements. And so, you know, we, we will, like I said, rely on and back up C dot on anything that they're requiring or asking of.
Okay. Doesn't sound to me like the sort of thing that C dot tends to be highly flexible in regards to, but it's, it seems like it's outside of our control. This will be external force. Something that has to get sorted out.
I agreed. And, you know, once again, we are, the traffic study right now has outstanding C dot comments that has been reviewed and we're waiting to see what kind of feedback they have. And, yeah, I mean, the, the turn lane being required and making sure that those financial guarantees are put into place are important to us as well.
And the other area they mentioned, I'm not prepared to remove it from the recommended conditions, but dealing with some, you know, some change in Berkstrom Park use, availability, whatever, that there's something to be, there's something to be addressed. I guess the gentleman indicated that he thinks nothing's required. I, I'm not sure. At the moment, I would be inclined to leave the condition in it. Without making, without trying to reach a decision on what that looks like, some, some resolution or some trade-off. I thank you.
Is it still the desire of the city and C dot to maintain the rest stop facility at this location?
To the best of my knowledge, that restroom facility is staying put for the time being. I don't know what that time horizon is. I'm not aware of any impending changes. Or, I, I just, I'm not aware.
And we're certainly very much aware of all the impacts that this project as proposed will have on that particular site.
But, but just to be clear, though, what we heard Mark say, and maybe David, that's why you're standing here, but we- But, but just to be clear though, what we heard Mark say, and maybe David, that's why you're standing here, but we heard Mark say those C dot recommendations are going to be postponed. So, so the Burks from Park will look exactly like it looks today with its access from the east side into that parking lot. That's what I'm assuming in this, in this phase of the development. And at some future point, then the C dot turn lane comes in, the part changes significantly. Is that right? Would that be right?
Yeah, David Mihata is, I'm with Catamount Engineering and the Civil for the project. So let me add a bunch of clarification on all this. So, so one item, our traffic study was required to estimate uses in the rest of the development. So there is phasing in the traffic study for future development. Um, C dot's specific requirement on their first red line review was that we develop an escrow mechanism that is portions of the site develop. They are paying into a fund to produce the C dot improvements that are required. And so that's the specific requirement from C dot is to develop the escrow account and pay some portion in it with this first phase of development. And that's specifically related to the turn lane improvements.
Right, okay.
The request to relocate the entrance to the parking lot was more internal to city staff with, with Ben Schmidt. It, that, and I agree with him, that relocation of that to prevent stacking into highway twenty four is a good idea. The net result of that is we're gonna lose two parking spaces where we, we punch through from a new roadway we were proposing.
Right.
And that's in phase one, but so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay, we're gonna move that in phase one.
Okay, got it.
Cause it makes sense.
Okay. Um. So what was your proportion for that escrow?
That's something that, that's the part they haven't seen yet. It wasn't appropriate to provide design for that lane in the preliminary plat for phase one, because we're not proposing it in phase one. But I have developed the design and I have a cost estimate that I need to get to city staff so that we can work on development of that escrow account based on those improvements.
And just, uh, um, some clarity around parking again, I know this, it's a little early, but in one of the renderings, Mark, I believe you, that, that north, yeah, the north side of the building is gonna have parking on it as well?
It is. So we, we kept the standard, well, it's not a standard city section, it's kind of a modified section.
Okay.
Throughout the, you know, south sides and west sides that we're developing. We did widen it from the existing street section that's there because we went with perpendicular parking versus angled parking.
Okay.
Proportions of it. The north street, however, because it's an extension of an existing fifteen foot alley along that, we widen that to twenty four foot flow line to flow line. And the parking along the north side will actually be located on lot one and, and future track A to the west. Uh, but that'll be on the private side versus the public side.
Oh, so would you consider that private parking?
Technically, it will be on the lot in private, but we're parking this more as, as in anticipation of future development. Yes, we have adequate parking for the initial proposed restaurant.
Yeah.
But the main goal of this development is to be able to provide that enhanced um, public square in the center of all the development. And so it's not a typical, you know, build a big parking lot with, for your restaurant and, and eat up that space. We're gonna scatter the parking throughout you less desirable portions of the development.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant this time?
I have one more question, and that is, uh, the staff report includes eight conditions of approval. Does the applicant agree with all eight of those?
I, I think we do. Anything you guys have a concern on? Yeah, I, I think the, the other one that, that I've been talking with Andrew about is how to develop the conveyance of the adjacent Beer Garden LLC property to the, to this, you know, to, to be able to utilize as right away. Um, I agree with him that if, if, you know, the Beer Garden LLC were to convey it directly to us through meats and bounds, that it would be an illegal subdivision. But I met with Steve Elak and, and Eric Simonson today, and we kind of went through that. And so we'll, we'll continue to work on the best method for conveyance, but I think it was important to prove that, you know, we had approval from that adjacent neighbor to utilize that portion. And I think there was a question about access, you know, just the fact that it's being on the property line for the parcels, that it would convey access to that adjacent parcel, even though they have no plan of development at this time.
All right, well, thank you. We'll take this opportunity now to open to public discussion. Uh, do we have anybody signed up for speaking? Very good. Uh, so invite anybody in the audience who has comments or questions, come forward. Not seeing a big rush right now. Uh, also open up to anybody on Zoom. Do we have Zoom participants?
There are.
There are? No hands raised, okay. Well, this is the opportunity to discuss this project, so if you're online, please raise your hand. Again, anybody in the audience wanting to speak? Supposed to count down a little bit to give everybody the proper opportunity, so uh, let's make it a last call. Not quite an auction, but uh, like to have your participation. Going twice, okay. Seeing no one coming forward, uh, public hearing is closed. I'll still offer the opportunity for the applicant to rebuttal, if there's no comments, anything else you'd like to add? Very good. Um, questions for staff, any discussion? Um, I'll go forward, Karen. We're looking at approving the preliminary plat. Could you describe the process? We'll come back as a final plat to planning commission or is this our?
Yeah, the final, the final plat, to, my memory serves me right, the final plat does come back before planning commission for a public hearing and then city council for the final decision. Andrew's been spending a little more time in that section of the code, he's nodding yes, so between the two of us.
Very good.
That's the path.
And then we're seeing a lot more than just a plat information. There's a lot of site development drawings and even some comments regarding the future site development, which isn't really under our purview, is what I understand.
Correct, the site plan review is done administratively in this particular, um, zone district and, and this, this use. Um, and, uh, the, in working with the, the applicant's engineer, um, just it, it, things were very intertwined in terms of him trying to work on design and such. So trying to split these apart into two applications has been, um, a little bit challenging. Uh, since so much of it does kind of intertwine, since there's only one lot, uh, right, going to be ripe for development at this point, so we've been, done the best we can to, to kind of unwind and separate those things for you. Um, but, um, yeah, it is a little mixed in terms of what you did get in front of you.
Site planner use underway and that generated the comments we've seen on your red marks.
If, if I could, um, y- yes and no. I mean, uh, we are here for a preliminary plat and, and I did my very best to, um, draw any findings or conclusions on that preliminary plat. Um, inherently, the, the, the site plan, the plan development does relate to the, the actual subdivision of the land. Um, some of those things are just inherently entwined and part of it is just due to the actual wording of your code. Um, the preliminary plat section, when I rambled through those, you know, few supplemental items that, that need to be involved, a lot of that has to do with the associated site plan. And so even though you're not necessarily applying that to said site plan and, and doing the same kind of review, um, the, you know, items such as, you know, the location of easements and for public spaces, for utilities, for access, all of that will relate to the preliminary plat. Um, and so, you know, the, 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 the submittal, uh, you know, due to the requirements of the code, uh, just kind of lead to that.
Thank you. Any thoughts I'd just share?
In, in terms of the escrow, it seems a little bit loosely defined what, what would trigger the actual uh, development of that turn lane and, you know, pull the money out of escrow. And then if that didn't happen, what would trigger final release of the money if that lane were never to be built? So I guess I would, uh, like to see, or maybe it's there and I just, you know, would need to be pointed to it. Some, some clarity on what those triggering mechanisms are to protect both parties.
It's not something that I could speak to off of the top of my head. Um, and, and I believe, I mean, as, as Miss as Mr. Mahadi said, the, the, the amount of information that's submitted for that preliminary traffic study, um, you know, there's just certain detail that's, that's not necessarily appropriate to be included. And so I think that the, the forthcoming comments from C dot on their revised traffic study will definitely speak to that. Um, and again, it's something that, you know, we want to make sure that we get, uh, final direction from them before we would move on to final plat. Uh, I'm not sure, I, I don't, I don't believe that, that, you know, specifics as far as what's triggering that or when those construction, you know, when that might happen. Um, I have a hard time believing that whatever triggers they have would never come to the point of that being released, um, especially with the future development that's planned here.
Is it fair to us, to assume at this point that the Burks from Alley will continue to be a public right of way?
Yes.
So I just have a thought looking at this project. I, I know we've looked at it before and it's been a long time, years and years, but I, I went in on the early discussions, but, uh, this obviously is gonna, you know, change the character of that little station rest area. Um, does the city have a, a plan with what it's gonna become, why that didn't become a part of this project to start with and why it was set aside to stay there? Did you, does anybody remember? And is it, is there a plan for it? Is this develops and becomes this whole area downtown to just make it more parking or, I mean, is it gonna stay useful like it is? It's, people are gonna park in it all the time for the downtown development, I would think, and not have it open for rest area parking, so. I did, I just have that question that I'm wondering about.
At this time, I'm not aware of any city proposed changes to Burks from Park. And then in terms of the timing of the, the Tava proposal and acquisition of the land versus Burks from Park, they were definitely two different parcels. Um, the, the Woodland Station property that we're discussing this evening was owned by the DDA. Um, and then Burks from Park is a city asset, so they were just different property owners to start with and, and different paths going forward.
Well, no further discussion, I guess, uh, we entertain a motion.
I guess before we have a motion, I've got to say that, uh, this particular project, two, 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 two very important things, I think. Uh, one is that the water allocation that had been previously approved for the uh, Woodlands Station, so on and so forth, carry over, didn't see any comments uh, from the city utilities department. So I feel very comfortable that the water availability to the city, to this project is available. And number two, this particular project will serve as the anchor as well as the emphasis to continue the development or the now the development of this particular area that we've been waiting years to occur. This will actually be the stimulus to do that. I think this project, the way it's planned, the way it's proposed, the architectural design, so on and so forth. We couldn't ask for anything better around this particular site, in this, this particular area. I'm gonna fully support this subject to the conditions mentioned by the, uh, the staff.
Kind of make a motion?
Move to approve subject to the conditions of approval.
Second from somebody, please.
Second.
Who seconded, please?
Mr. Jones. Very good, take a, uh, vote, please.
No discussion on the motion?
I'm assuming they watch.
Okay, um, Vice Chair Brown?
Yes.
Don DeZellum?
Yes.
George Jones?
Yes.
Ken Kennedy?
Yes.
Larry Larson?
Yes.
Don Hoynes?
Yes.
Cole Middleton?
Yes.
And Chair Hartsfield.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing progress move forward. Sure, we all are. Uh, reports, next item on the agenda, we staff have anything to share with us tonight?
I just wanted to note that we do have a work session here at our second meeting this month. Um, I know you guys need more good stuff to review. Uh, Logan Simpson is working on that and we hope to get that out to you here pretty quickly, because I know you would like as much time as possible. Uh, we will be circling back to chapter two in the draft code. That's the one that talks about each of the individual zoning districts. And if you recall, um, the folks that were here probably about a year ago at this point, uh, when we first dove into that chapter, we made it yeah, I don't know, nine, thirteen pages, something like that into that. And, um, you gave us great feedback and, um, because of the repetitive nature of that chapter, you know, if you recall, we said, okay, we've got great stuff right here and we have taken that feedback and we are incorporating it in. So you're basically gonna see a new draft of chapter two, um, for where you start, because we did restructure some things. Um, I think it, uh, really helps with usability of that particular chapter. Um, cleans things up, hopefully creates a lot more consistency between how the different zoning districts are laid out, the criteria for them. Um, so I'm, I'm very hopeful that this is a nice step forward. And like I said, my commitment is we're hoping to get this to you here, uh, hopefully ideally it's good two weeks in advance here, so early next week, um, so maybe only a week and a half before the meeting, but we're trying to get you more time, or as much as possible, so, um, that's the goal.
This is gonna be chapter two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, only chapter two.
We can do that.
Okay. So, um, and then I guess the only other thing to note is we do have a new face in the planning department. Uh, we have a part-time permit technician who started earlier this week. Uh, his name is Grant Attai, and we're just very glad to have him. Um, so at some point, if you're coming in for something and there's, there's a new face there, just, you know, please say hello and introduce yourself. So thank you.
Very good. Any comment for the commissioners? Like to thank your attendance, Andrew, appreciate that. And it's seven thirty seven, we are now adjourned.